Happy Friday, y'all. I bet you didn't expect this to happen. It's been such a long time since we've had a town hall of pop culture here on the channel, but it's long overdue. So many of you have been hitting me up. "Kempire, we need a town hall. We need a town hall on Jussie. We need a town hall on Kanye. We need a town hall on Wendy Williams. We need a town hall on the things that Candy said about Nene this week." Well, this is your opportunity. If you don't know what a town hall is, maybe you have one in your town. Where we talk about some of the most pressing details where you, most of all, I just lay out what's been out there. Okay, I just lay it out there and this is for you guys to weigh in and share your thoughts. But before we do that, like the video, share this video, share it on your Twitter, share it to your cousin, send it to your coworker that's looking across from you and wondering why you're laughing or what you're talking about. Be sure to share it and let me know where you guys are watching from. Let me know where you're watching from. It's always a great opportunity. Replay Crew, I also want to know where you're watching from before you, you know, you lay in on the hot topics. Let me know who you are, where you're watching from. I'm your boy, The Kempire, but for the town hall, can I just be like councilman Kempire? I don't want to say judge. I don't want to say judge. No disrespect to the judges and the attorneys out there. I'll just say councilman, right? Who is usually the head of a town hall? Is it like the council, councilman, councilwoman, councilperson? New Zealand's in the house, West New York, Virginia, what's going on, New York? Nut Bush, where Tina Turner's from? Nut Bush, Tennessee's in the building? What's going on? Nut Bush City, sorry. Toronto, what's going on? Ebony, will this town hall be done according to Robert's Rules of Order? Who's Robert's Rules of Order? Santa Domingo's in the house. Love it. International, international. All right, so you guys need to see what I'm wearing, right? Because y'all know, look, where's my gavel? Look, where's my TikTok? The Netherlands is in the building. What's going on Netherlands? I'm planning a trip. I need to come back to Netherlands. Hopefully, all of your stuff. Okay, Town Council. Okay, so what's my title, y'all? Give me a title. Look, give me a title. All right, let me show y'all myself. Hey, y'all. All right, should I stand up? Let me stand up. Let me stand up so y'all can see the full ensemble. So y'all can see the full ensemble. I don't know why I'm wearing pants with this type of outfit. I don't need to wear pants. All right. Come on. All right, y'all ready for the? I don't know, for choir or church? Chairman is good. Yes. Sister on the move, Chairman. Chairman Kempire. I like that. I like that. Or Council. We will get it together. Replay Crew, we will vote on this. Robin said I just hollered the robe. You know how long this has been sitting in the robe room? Look, the robe room, AKA my closet. You know how long this has been sitting? Since our last town hall. I ordered this sucker. Theo, Theo says, honey, I never wear pants. Guys, if you're just joining us, this is our Town Hall of Pop Culture where we weigh in on some of the most pressing hot topics that we've been covering here on the channel. As you know, we talk about reality TV, but we cover everything in pop culture. So if you enjoy pop culture and you enjoy consistent content, be sure to subscribe to the Kempire Daily YouTube channel. We're live on multiple platforms, including TikTok. We see you TikTok. Tap your screens. I see you guys. Brooklyn's in the house, Illinois is in the house, the Netherlands is in the house. Appreciate you guys. And we're live on Twitch and Twitter at The Kempire, but of course, we are live on the Kempire Daily YouTube channel where we are celebrating 100,000 subscribers. I meant to hook up my other mic, but it's okay. This is working. Oh, wait, don't forget the gavel. Don't forget the gavel. And it says Kempire Town Hall of Pop Culture. It says you can't see, look, I don't know if you'll be able to see it. Oh, you can see it. All right. Look, yes, honey. I won't be hitting this. I'm just gonna hit the button, okay? I got the gavel and everything. Guys, if you also missed it, we are doing 100, not 100, look, we are celebrating 100K with giveaways. So stay tuned. You gotta be here in order to win a giveaway. You gotta be here on the Kempire Daily YouTube channel exclusively TikTok. Just saying. So what is on the docket? So I've listed a couple of videos that we've covered this week in the description of this video, talking about a variety of topics, including the Candy and Nene situation. So as you know, Candy's been doing a lot of promo for Candy and the gang. And of course, people are asking her questions about Nene and Nene calling Bravo racist. So according to Candy, she says that she doesn't believe that Bravo is racist. She says that, you know, for someone that always used to brag about making the most on the show, if they were doing you so dirty, why exactly, why would you stay? Look, I know some people say, well, just because they pay you a lot, doesn't mean that they don't treat you dirty. There is that side of things. But we also said in covering this whole situation with Nene is that Nene all of a sudden wanted to throw them under the bus after giving us this whole, you know, goodbye and it just seemed like they were in a good place when they were in a good place for many years until they weren't willing to give her the money that she wanted. But is Bravo racist? We could go back and forth on that debate. This is your opportunity to talk about that. We are also going to talk about Kanye West. Okay, Kanye West has been in the news a lot lately. And I had to report to you because as you know, let me just give you a quick update on what's been going on with Kanye. Okay? So we're gonna talk about Kanye. We're gonna talk about Wendy Williams and her new interview that just came out this week with Good Morning America. We're also going to talk about, um, who was, oh, Jussie. I just posted a new video on Jussie earlier today. If you missed it, Jussie's brother, Joqui. I don't know how you pronounce it. His brother. Should I play it? Look, I'm gonna play it for you. For those that missed it, let me play the video for you. This is what Jussie's brother believes about the black community and how we have failed his brother. Okay, let me see if I can pull this up. Shout out to the Jasmine Brand for capturing this video. Hold on, let me just pull this down. Let me see if I can share my screen. Share screen. Lord, why does it do this when I'm live? Hold on. Okay, this already has, you know what, let me just play the audio because it doesn't want me to share the video. It's okay. It's all right, y'all.
Our community is innately, has a lot of homophobia in it. And they leverage that fact. They knew that ultimately Jussie was not gonna get the same type of support as a straight black man. And it's been obvious. I find it very difficult to believe that this ever would have gotten this far if Jussie was a straight black man. And so we need to really think about that. Celebrities, common people, everyone. We need to think about the fact that literally society at large failed him. And hopefully, one day, the truth comes out to where people can see it clear as day. I don't know how they don't see it now, but hopefully someday that happens. And when that day happens, it's really a shame that it took that long for folks to understand that.
Jockey, so you think that if Jussie were a straight black man, the public reception would have been way less intent on vilifying him from the jump?
Hands down. As a straight black man, that is hands down what would have happened.
So I went in, so I'm not, I'm gonna refrain from giving too much of my opinion here. I already did that in the previous video talking about, that was Jussie Smollett's brother, who has been advocating for Jussie. Jussie is now out of jail. Okay, he's now out of jail on an appeal, okay? Apparently, while he was in jail, he was on an ice fast, just having ice cold water. He was in a psych ward. His brother came out about that. He, you know, before Jussie even went in, he said, oh, I'm not suicidal. I'm not suicidal. Okay. But Jussie's brother is now blaming the black community for their lack of support of Jussie, who's been convicted by jury of his peers. It's now our fault. It's our fault, y'all. Really? These are some of the topics that you're going to be able to weigh in on. You will have a minute, okay? You will have a minute. That's it. That, this is why when everyone says, Kempire, where's the timer? The timer is exclusively, this particular timer of a minute is exclusive for our Town Hall of Pop Culture. I'm your boy Chairman Kempire. I'm not gonna even take the judge Kempire because, you know, one day, maybe, maybe I'll have a show. I don't want to be a judge. I do like the gavel, though. I do like the gavel. Kanye, let's talk about Kanye. I'm just laying out the field of information for you guys before you call in so you know what you're talking about, okay? We will drop the call in link, but look, we have over 500 people in the building. Over almost 600 people in the building. Before I drop the call in link, let's get to at least 300 likes. Liking the video is an easy and free way of supporting the channel. I know you're so sick and tired of creators saying, like the video, subscribe, like the video, subscribe. This is why. This will push the video out to more people. This will also let you be notified, even if you're not subscribed, be notified in the algorithm of content that you like, very similar to myself, maybe someone else that's doing something that's similar. This is what, so when you like my video, you're also helping a smaller creator get noticed, depending on YouTube's algorithm. So support, thank you in advance. Okay. Let's talk about Kanye. As you know, I've been covering Kanye and all of his antics on social media for months now. Most recently, we talked about how Pete Davidson and the text message exchange that he had with Kanye was exposed by Pete Davidson's friend online. And it seems like Pete Davidson was really trying to be the mature one. But we gotta remember, it was Pete Davidson's friend that leaked this text. So of course, Pete Davidson already knew that he was gonna put it out there. But he knew if he didn't put it out there, Kanye would put it out there. You also know Kanye was suspended for 24 hours from social media. Well, not social media, from Instagram. I wonder if that suspension went on to Facebook, but look, doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. You also know that DL Ugly weighed in on the whole Kanye mess. Kanye then decided to attack him. But it wasn't until Kanye took shots, calling Trevor Noah, and this is for educational purposes only, called him a coon on his social media. That is when Facebook and Instagram Meta decided enough is enough. We're going to suspend you for 24 hours. Okay, that suspension should be up at this point, okay? Sheila says it should have been more. And we're gonna talk about it. You guys will have an opportunity to call in and weigh in in regards to this. The backlash for Kanye hasn't ended. As I said to you before, Trevor Noah had a really, really great heartfelt conversation. I don't feel like, you know, Trevor Noah is good for making comedy, but this was a heartfelt moment where he was just really pointing out how Kanye's toxic behavior is very similar to what he went through with his stepfather, very much what a lot of people have gone through that have been in situations of abuse and how serious this is. Sean King, the activist, also spoke out about this a few weeks ago as well. We've been talking about how his behavior is bullying, how his behavior is problematic, how his bully, how his behavior is tormenting to the mother of his children. There is still no formal custody situation and you look, the thing about Kanye that a lot of people like to, you know, protect Kanye about is that he does have valid points within all of what he says in the, in between. He does have valid points in regards to North being on TikTok. And I said, you know what, North doesn't have to be on TikTok, Kim. You guys can create videos together and not post them on social, on social media, especially because of your influence, because there are millions of people that follow you. Why would you want to post on TikTok? You can still create those videos and keep them all private. Someone, someone tagged me in an old tweet from 2018 where Kim Kardashian was defending Kanye's behavior because a lot of people in the media were calling it erratic. Fast forward to now and that behavior has now turned on her. Again, just because someone felt one way a few years ago, doesn't mean after how many years of dealing with his behavior doesn't, she's changed her mind. Obviously, she decided to divorce the man. I still don't believe in the Kim and Pete Davidson relationship. I believe it's a come up. The same way I believe Khloe and Trey Songz's relationship. I believe that's a come up. We can talk about that as well. We could talk about, there's a lot on the docket. There's a lot that you guys wanted to talk about. If you're just joining us and if you're new to the channel, it is a subscribers only live chat. So subscribe to the channel. We have over 102,000 subscribers, almost 103,000 subscribers. We just hit 100,000 subscribers this week. Thank you and shout out to all of our subscribers. We appreciate you. Shout out to our Team Kempire and Royal Court members. We appreciate you as well. And shout out to our moderators, guys. Don't forget to show love to the moderators and to our Team Kempire Royal Court members. You don't have to be a member, but we appreciate the monthly subscribers because they really, really help us to. Look, y'all help pay for the robe. Y'all probably like, I want my money back. Okay, you didn't pay for the robe, but you pay for us to have time to do a town hall of pop culture. I am going to drop the call in link. Have we hit our, hit our goal? Of course, we hit our goal. We went above our goal. Guys, let's get to 400 likes. I'm gonna drop the call in link where you have a minute, one minute to weigh in on one of these hot topics, okay? One of these hot topics. But before I even get into that, Kanye, there's a petition, y'all. There is a petition for Kanye to be removed from Coachella. And the reason why I think Kanye should be removed from Coachella is because he's also trying to have Travis Scott, okay? He's also trying to have Travis Scott be a part of his show as well. And as you know, although, and we can go back and forth on Travis Scott and his responsibility in the Astroworld Festival situation, that's a whole other thing. But you see this number, I just took the screen cap right before the live. So there's almost 8,000 signatures to have Kanye removed. The person that created this says, Kim, Kim Pete. They say, we have watched Kanye harass, manipulate and hurt Kim, Pete and others for over a year now, okay? No one seems to want to stand up to him and the ones that do, he puts under fire as well. I.e. DL Ugly, I.e. Trevor Noah. A few people, okay? It says, most recently has been threatening actual bodily harm on others. This is ridiculous that he's allowed to freely do this. Coachella, along with other brand names that are still working with him. They continue, let me, let me go to the actual host so I can read the rest. Coachella, along with other brands that are still working with him, Balenciaga, Gap, should be ashamed of themselves and should not, should not be having, be giving him any more of a platform. Please sign and share. It currently has almost 8,000 signatures. 8,000 signatures. All right. These are the topics, but if there's something that's just on your mind and you want to talk about it, you have one minute. But as always, let me tell you the rules. Let me put up my disclaimer, okay? Look, excuse the editing, because even when I, if you ever use Canvas, sometimes it comes out like this, all right? But let me just read it to you so you have a full understanding of the rules. The opinions of the callers do not reflect the opinions of Kempire, myself. The Kempire LLC are sponsors or Google or YouTube. The callers are calling in of their own free will and agree to not use profanity or make derogatory statements of any group of people, okay? All topics are for entertainment purposes only. None of the information presented in this video or by the Kempire should be taken as fact and everything is alleged, okay? Charisse, Charisse was like, oh, my God, yes. And it's, and it's the weirdest things, weirdest things. All right, so I put up the disclaimer. All right, don't forget to like the video and don't forget to get your Coldest Water bottle. Come on. Discount code K E M P 1 0, K E M P 1 0 for 10% off. Thank you for supporting the channel. Link is in the bio or link is in the description. There you go. All right, let's drop this, let's drop this call in link, because I know you guys are itching to call in. Shout out to everyone that's in, in all of our chats, Facebook, The Kempire and Kempire Daily on Facebook. We're all, Kemp is doing the, am I doing the most? What's going on, Data? Data's in the building too. Guys, don't forget to show love to the mods, please. Lisa, I love my green bottle too. That, I've been partnering with Coldest for over a year now. They sent me this one from, from my TikTok. If you guys aren't following me on TikTok, TikTok, what's going on? Look. Okay, what else did I want to talk about before I, all right, I dropped the call in link. Let me pin the call in link. Okay, I'd love to say, did I not drop the call in link? There we go. Pin, there we go. There we go. All right. I probably should have paid attention to, to the docket, but you guys seem like you had mixed feelings about the docket. Some of you want to talk about Wendy, some of you want to talk about Kanye. Very far, a few of you want to talk about Jussie, all right? All right, I pinned the call in link. Guys, we have over 800 people watching our Town Hall of Pop Culture here on the channel. If you're a part of the Replay Crew, I want to know your thoughts. You don't even have a time limit. You can go as much as you want in the comment section, but as always, what we do not do here on the channel is moderate adults. All right, all right. All right, we got quite a few people backstage. Let me put up everyone's name. Guys, for those that are calling in, again, you only have a minute. So I won't even ask you to include your, your name, where you're watching from, because I know you just want the full minute of what you have to say, okay? So let's do that. Let's do, oh, wait, before I bring anyone up, I do want to say thank you. Adriana. Thank you so much for the super chat. The robe is killing me and not the swinging of the gavel. I just love you and our Kempire community. Thank you, Adriana. I'm glad. Ellen, Ellen, thank you so much for the super chat. She said, the urge to say your honor rolling. Thank you so much for the super chat. Appreciate you. All right, let's, let's weigh in now. Guys, you will have a minute. Let me put the timer up. Let me put the timer up. Should I move the timer over here? No, leave it over here. You see, I'll see the magic of the behind the scenes right now. Okay. Let's, Mel, I'm gonna bring you up. What's going on, Mel?
Hey, TGIF, how you doing?
Yes, thank God it's Friday. What's going on?
But you know what? I want to say Adriana is spot on. You know what, Kempire, I just want to say, you know what? Congratulations on 100,000.
Thank you.
And I want to say, you know what, you really, I watch, do different YouTube and call into different things. I have to say, just over the times I've called in over these months, I've just grown to really, really love your channel. I love it.
Thank you.
I don't really give you, we don't talk, so I don't get a chance to tell you, but I really think that just as a black man and a member of the community, just so many things I would love to tell you. It's just that I, I see it and I'm, and I love it and I just wanted to tell you that, you know, I really enjoy. I call in sometime and say things, but I see you and I respect it and it's wonderful. So I'm just happy for you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I've been wanting to say for a minute and I just never, you know, say anything. And also the robe makes me laugh, but it's, and maybe as a reference people don't get, but it's this show called Amen back in the day. I used to live for it. So come on now, you missed it, Kempire, get it. So you know, Mr. Deacon, he was.
And I'll start dancing.
That's right. So that's why I was like, you were moving around, saying, wait a minute, that's giving me amen. I'm like, okay. All right, so you know, I just now said all that, again, I'm letting people call in. Jesse, I would just say, you know what, I'm conflicted by that. I think that the brother has some issues. I think maybe the family has issues. Maybe it's hereditary. Would all of them have an issue except for the, except for the ladies? The ladies seem to be on point with somebody, because I love their movies. But it's nobody's responsibility what he's done. I will say, I'm not devastated that he's out. My personal view, I'm not because, you know, we just, we just, I feel sometimes I can get too deep and not, because it's a fun show. Sometimes I feel like our community, a lot of communities are under attack politically and just with everything that's going on. So to see one of us in some way, even if he's, even if he's wrong with the actions he's chosen. I mean, I was happy he was out. I have to say that. But I do think that he needs some help. I think that the family needs to stop blaming other people. They need to sit him down, get him the right help and just be quiet for a little bit, pretty much, just heal. You know, if there's some issues going on with, with the guy, love on him, you know, give him some perspective or something. But yeah, so that's my opinion about that.
Thank you so much for calling in, Mel. We gave you a little extra time because you, you know, you were praising me.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in, Mel.
Okay.
Bye. We gave him the extra bit because he didn't get into what he had to say. He was giving me love, okay? Can I get a minute of love, y'all? Okay, we won't do that for everyone else. Everyone else, get to the point. You can just say your name and then I will start the timer, okay? Love from Gaslo, what's going on? I gotta do a Europe tour. And when I say tour, I mean just like for fun, not like tour, tour. All right, Amy, I'm gonna bring you up. What's going on, Amy?
Hey, Kempire. You know, I forgot to say it last time. I did write it in chat. Congratulations on the 100K.
Thank you.
I feel a part of a community, so I'm happy about that. Okay, so my comment is about Kim K and Kanye West. I want everybody to take every, you know, the celebrity out of it and all of that stuff. Although he has stalking her online, I do think, um, Kim, her pouncing around as a married woman with a whole person and dating, it's just a bad look. And I feel like to a certain extent, this is only gonna be played out on their show. I think Kanye needs to bow out at this point because this is what the Kardashians do. We will be watching all of the shenanigans on the show and not seeing this as harassment or even antagonizing when it's on her show. They rule social media in that way. They have been playing this game for years. But if you think about it, if it was a married man walking around, um, cavanting with the woman and getting tattoos of her and saying, I love her. And it's a woman with four children, looking kind of sad and depressed and begging, we would kind of have a little more sympathy. Not that I care about Kanye, but I just think that Kim has done this regularly. She has done it with, when she was pregnant, with, and she was pregnant with Kanye's baby, when she was married to Chris Humphrey. So to a certain extent, I think all of it, just, I mean, just get yourself Devon Kanye, say off the internet. And instead of these storylines and it happens on the show, that's it.
Amy, thank you so much for calling in.
Have a nice one.
Everybody, stop playing with me when y'all hear that gavel. Guys, I posted the link. For those that are wondering how you can call in, I posted and pinned the link on the Kempire Daily YouTube channel. TikTok, if you would like to call in, head on over to the Kempire Daily YouTube channel. Subscribe, of course. You will have an opportunity, one minute to call in and share your thoughts. But you guys know people are going to try and break the rules, but not in my court or counsel. My town hall, there we go. All right, Robin's backstage. What's going on, Robin?
Start the timer. First, the Smollett family, I believe they have now engaged in a new conspiracy of delusion. Cannot blame the black community for whatever is going on. If I were advising them, I would tell them to change the narrative and move to the constitutionality of the latest prosecution where he is definitely a victim of double jeopardy. He had already worked out terms, you know, with the, he paid, he paid a fine and he did community service. That was, that was the case, but the other folks wanted to roll up in here. That's 30 seconds. Let's go on to Wendy Williams. Did not believe the GMA thing for a moment. It was cut and paste. She didn't say five whole sentences. And don't forget, at the end, she talked about coming, seeing everybody on The Wendy Show, not the Wendy Williams Show. And in my last eight seconds, congratulations on 102,000 plus. Glad to be a part of it. I love you and love this show and love the Kempire community.
Thank you, Robin. Robin was ready. I love that. Can y'all all be ready like Robin was? Can y'all all be ready like Robin was? Look, I get it, guys. People are nervous too when they call in. People are nervous. Let me just say thank you for a couple of super chats that I didn't want to miss. Victor, thank you so much for the super chat. Victor says, hey handsome. Hey to you. He says, I love all the work you do. Hugs from Chicago. Chicago. I need to get back to Chicago. I need to go back. Candace, thank you so much for the super sticker. Appreciate you as well. All right, all right, Chelsea, I'm gonna bring you up. What's going on, Chelsea?
Hey, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Good. Congratulations on 100K. We're gonna get to that million soon.
Yeah.
Yes, that's fine. Um, so I'm not gonna probably take a whole minute. I just want to point out that we as a community, um, need to stop saying that Kanye is being like problematic or acting crazy or we need to use the word abusive because that's what he is doing. He is abusing Kim Kardashian, not physically, but he's manipulating. He's using scare tactics. He goes across the street from her, like he is acting in an abusive way. And if it were anybody else but Kim Kardashian, like I get it, I do not like her. I don't like her family. I try to avoid them at all costs, but if it were anybody else besides her, we would, we would use the word abusive. We'd be like, dang, this person is crazy. If this were somebody in our family, they came and said, oh, my gosh, my ex is doing this. We would say, we need to figure out how we're gonna get him locked up or get a restraining order. Like he's acting crazy and we need to use the word abusive so it can stop being excused as anything but that. But my minute's up. Have a good dinner. Bye bye.
Thank you, Jussie. I love the fact that you guys know that I'm gonna eat. Y'all saw what time it is. I said, oh, I'm gonna do the live first though, because y'all know, I don't, look, when I'm thinking about food later, I'm like, I can't, can't function anyways. All right, Anulee's backstage. I'm gonna bring you up. What's going on, Anulee?
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Hi, how are you? I haven't talked to you in a long time. Congratulations.
Congratulations on everything. Hi, beautiful people this evening. You can start the timer. Okay. Um, Jesse Smollet. So you know what? I was, I felt like at somebody tweeted this a couple of like years ago. If it were like twenty twenty and that thing happened, he probably would have got slapped on the wrist. And then they, he lied. His brother, delusional, not gonna support liar. And I had a conversation with one of my friends and she is, you know, white. She's like a left wing, but she was telling me like her mom's, her mom and her dad, who are a little bit more conservative, that when they hear that story, you know, like, it's just like, like, who can they believe? So it's just like, we can't really let him go on that. He, it had to happen. I'm not supporting a lie. Next person, Kanye. Okay, this might be a little bit problematic, but honestly, after hearing that D L Hughley like interview, like, I'm, I'm sorry. It gave OJ, sorry, I'm sorry to say, it's kind of like when the last calls were abusive, I was like, hit the nail on the head. That's all. Thank you so much. Take care. Congrats again. Bye.
Thank you. Bye. Oh, I love it. Everyone, look, everyone's on it. Guys, you just joining us, this is our town hall of pop culture where we talk about some of the things that are on the docket. And on the docket today is Wendy Williams. You know, she did an interview this week. Kanye West, there's a petition for Kanye West to be removed from Coachella. And Jesse is still in the news. All right, Gio, I'm gonna bring you up. What's going on, Gio?
What's up with my brother Kempire? Make congratulations to your hundred thousand subs for real. I'm proud of you. I see you grow, you growing. I'm really proud of you, my brother. But I'm gonna get jumped right into it like everybody is now. I'm gonna talk about Kanye West, right? Now, I don't think Kanye should be canceled, but just, just because it is, hear me out. The reason why I say this is because I feel like Kanye is exposing a lot of stuff that a lot of people in Hollywood are afraid to expose. And he's doing it in a certain manner, like remember somebody even posted about Pete Davidson had was making jokes about, you know, doing relations with babies. I didn't find that funny at all, but I like Kanye a lot. I like him as a man and what he's doing. He's, he's trying to push the narrative out there for fathers, that single fathers or fathers period with kids. And so I, I respect Kanye. Another thing on Jesse Smollet, uh, no, Jesse. Yeah, my buddy. You get, you get what you get and you've been out here tripping. So if you want to sit up there and put lies on, uh, in the court spaces, those people must prosecute you for whatever you was doing. Now, you was long for lying and trying to put it on the black community. You know, it's not our fault, it's your fault. That's all I gotta say, my brother Kempire, and thank you for letting me up.
Of course, thanks to you for calling in. I love how y'all following the rules. All right, let's get into some more callers. Kojia, I'm gonna bring you up. What's going on, Kojia?
Hey, I said it from the beginning, Kanye was a stalker when it first came out. The court of public opinion and civil opinion are not the same. The first thing that is done in a divorce hearing or a custody hearing is temporary time sharing. It would have been given during the first hearing. Kanye don't have visitation because he don't follow the rules and he don't want to be on the set schedule. A regular, degular, schmegal person would get every other weekend. He want his children to be brought to Sunday service instead of getting them every weekend on Friday, getting four children ready, feeding them and taking them theyself to by ten AM. Why they talking about what Kim did? Kanye been around here flooding meth heads everywhere. And unfortunately, people don't get to dictate who they ex is screw and stuff. Because if a woman was talking about who Kanye had and his girlfriends, they would call her bitter. So this is the law. And I'm tired of these content creators talking about he being done wrong. If he wanted time sharing, he would have, average divorce takes twelve to eighteen months for my broke ass people. So you know, in the first hearing, they would have ordered mediation. If they couldn't come up with it, the judge at a minimum would have given him every other weekend from Friday evening to Sunday evening. And by him living across the street, he would have got a weekday. He don't want it. And that's all I got to say, stick to the law.
Kojia was ready. Kojia was ready. Woo. We have, we have a full backstage, so let me not even waste any time. Guys, if you haven't liked the video, we have already over a thousand people watching. It's okay, those are on the phone. It's all right. Just pretend it's just you and me talking, okay? All right, Dr. AJ, I'm gonna bring you up. What's going on, doctor?
Hey, it's town hall time. Kempire is fine. Hey, congrats on your one hundred K. I'm so happy for you.
Thank you so much.
All right, so you know, the first thing is, I really hope that my siblings ride for me, like, you know, Jesse's siblings. If I lie, I just hope that they come up with other lies to make myself look good. That's a ride or die sibling. Thank you, sibling. It makes no sense. Second thing is with Kanye, see, I was trying to give him a little bit of leeway, okay, because of his bipolar diagnosis, which he shared. And just his, how can I say it? His abandonment issues, what it seems like he deals with. But when it comes down to it, a part of me feels like Kanye is trying to do the best for his kids, but he's going about it in a wrong manner. So I feel like, well, a lot of people have to remember that within Hollywood is a dangerous game you play and he's playing it the best way he can that he feels like he can. It ain't right. But you know, he's doing what he feels like he needs to do for his kids. And I just hope it turns out to where he's not damaging his character in the meantime.
Okay. Dr. AJ, thank you so much for calling in.
Thank you.
I'm liking this minute timer. I know all of you keep saying, Kempire, bring it to the regular shows. No, then it wouldn't be a town hall. All right, I know that real town halls, you get like, what, three, five minutes? I don't know. You're not getting that many minutes here. All right, Victory, I'm gonna bring you up. Victory, what's going on?
Hi, I just wanted to say, as far as Jesse in the black community, people get injured in protest. People die in protest. I'm not protesting over nobody's foolishness. You know what I'm saying? So I don't blame anybody for staying on the sidelines for him. As far as Wendy, whether she's sane or not, she deserves actual access to her money and no conservatorship. And as far as Kim, and I think that the social media TikTok, you wanna, I think the best parents on the internet are the ones doing the stupid TikTok dances with the kids. Because you want to guide your child through social media. There is no difference between Kanye and Kim posting on Instagram and North and Kim on TikTok. It's not safe out there, but they, you know, you have to guide them. It's like the people who give their children alcohol in the house so they can teach them how to be responsible.
Victory, we appreciate you calling in. All right, Donovan, I'm gonna bring you up. What's going on, Donovan?
Hi, Kempire, how are you?
How are you?
I'm doing good. Listen, I'm a new subscriber to your channel. I've been watching you for the last recently, and I want to say congratulations. But let's talk about Wendy Williams. Listen, I love Wendy Williams and I don't want to watch The Wendy Williams Show if she's not on it. I don't care if Sherri Shepherd's hosting it. I don't care if Fat Joe, Marry Ma's hosting it. It's not The Wendy Williams Show. Let me say something. I wish Sherri, Wendy would go on Sherri Shepherd's show, okay, because it's not a good look. And I would have to say to Sherri Shepherd, be careful, Devon Mercury, because they just canceled Nick Cannon's show. So Sherri Shepherd, you're gonna be next. I don't know if they're gonna create a whole new YouTube channel for Sherri Shepherd, because they're not gonna just change the name for The Wendy Williams Show to Sherri Shepherd Show. And I don't, I don't like that at all. So and as far as Kanye, listen, I'm on gagging with Jason Lee. Jason Lee is in charge of Kanye's Instagram information. Why is it that his Instagram is being suspended, Jason Lee? I don't understand. You're in charge of his channel. You're the one that's making sure that he stays on point. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you so much, Donovan. I love how you guys got your points ready to go. You guys are ready for the town hall better than I was. Did y'all know the town hall was coming? I did sort of say it yesterday. If you're a subscriber, I did mention more than likely I'll be doing a town hall today. All right, Tatiana, I'm gonna bring you up. What's going on, Tatiana?
Hi, Kempire, how are you?
How are you?
Good, good. Congratulations on your over hundred K now. That's really impressive. More to come, more to come. So just kind of like how everyone said, I think the through line, why all of these stories annoy me, by all of these stories, I mean Jesse and Kanye and Nene, when she talked, went off on Bravo, is this like using of race? So Kanye will say like, black fathers are not, you know, they're disrespected, right? That is true, but that's not your situation here. Jesse will say, you know, black gay men are disrespected and, you know, we get, they receive a lot of hate in the community. That is true, but that's not the situation here. And same with Nene and what she was dealing with with Bravo, you know? I know Bravo has its issues, but to be honest, like Candy said, Nene was getting paid a lot when she was on. So I don't think she was one of those people who was getting the brunt of the discrimination. And so my through line with all of this is like, stop using black people's injustice for your own personal game. It's not a good look and it's like, really, it's just, it's ugly and I don't like it. So thank you.
I think she said it the best, but anyways, guys, don't think that just because you have a differing of opinion, you can't call in or that you're not welcome here. Okay, as long as you're respectful, everybody can have an opinion here, okay? Just a reminder, disclaimer, gotta do a disclaimer in between again. The opinions of the callers do not reflect the opinions of Kempire, the Kempire LLC, our sponsors, or Google, or Apple, or anyone. Remember, everything that we say is alleged. All right. Let's continue. Yolissa, I'm gonna bring you up. Hey, Yolissa.
Empire.
How are you?
Okay, first of all. Okay, so let's start with Jesse.
Okay.
Jesse Smollet reached a deal with the court, whatever, Chicago and did his time by performing community service. It is in every right of the city of Chicago to sue him for using public funds for a staged fake hate crime. Now, I, I don't know if he was trying to, I don't know if he was trying to bring, I don't know, justice or whatever, or Batman or whatever, but come on, like, these civil servants are paid by our taxes. And so the city of Chicago has a right to be like, hey, can you pay for the work that we did? Because it was overtime trying to do this fake hate crime. Now, for Kanye West, I just don't want to see that, I mean, divorce is already ugly and I'm, but I don't want to see this mess. These are two privileged black people utilizing general black people's pain for their gain, and it's unacceptable to me. Although I don't like the situations, it's just not fair. And that's, those are my two points.
Thank you so much, Yolissa. Okay, guys, you're just joining us. This is our, look, quarterly, quarterly, we'll, 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 we'll stick to quarterly. You guys know I'm busy here. You're getting content every single day. And if you're not subscribed, subscribe to the channel, be a part of the growing community that we are building here on the channel, Kempire Daily. If you're watching on other platforms, subscribe to our YouTube, Kempire Daily. You're getting longer form videos, TikTok, and you're getting a community, town hall, different types of shows are here on the the channel. So be sure to subscribe, turn on your notification bell, join our Texan community. Hold on, let me get the Texan community. All right. And don't forget to like the video if you haven't liked it already. If you're part of the replay crew, let me know your thoughts on some of these topics that we're talking about. And again, it's okay to have a different opinion, but be respectful of everyone. Okay, let me just say thank you to Diana. Thank you, Diana, so much for the super chat. Diana says, congrats, Kempire, one oh two, YouTube, two thirty three point five on TikTok, team raised over ten thousand. Diana, we raised two thousand last month. Yes, oh, yeah, you, you posted that. Diana knows her numbers. Thank you, Diana, so much. We appreciate you. Yes, Fox, we miss you in the chat, Diana. We do, we do. Thank you so much, Diana. We appreciate you as always. Okay. Okay, Krypton's Core. What a name. Wait, is your thing, oh, my God, the Avatar is moving. Okay, I'm gonna bring you up. What's going on, Krypton's Core?
Congrats, congrats, man.
Thank you.
And Judge Kempire, congrats. I'm, I only have one topic.
Okay.
Juicy Smollet. And I'm calling him juicy. Dude. Let me tell you one, one thing. We know how corrupt and how racist this Chicago PD has been over the years. But when you're telling me that at two o'clock in the morning, a black man is gonna find two Merkas, two Merka dudes, Merker! In Chicago? No, I don't think so. So that we were quiet. We didn't, we didn't believe anything he had to say. So we just stayed silent. We, we knew that he was fucking, we knew he was lying. I'm sorry, I don't want to apologize. I mean, I don't want to cuss, but we knew he was lying, but come on. No. So we knew he was lying, so we just like, okay, just chill. He can't blame us for, 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 for knowing that he was lying. That's it.
All right, thank you so much, Krypton's Core. Let me just say thank you. We got a couple of super chats. Ty, thank you so much for the super chat. Ty says, need a bailiff? Love you, Kempire. Always need a bailiff. We have to make you a mod. Thank you so much for the super chat. Ebony, thank you so much for the super chat as well. We appreciate you. I, I don't, y'all can't really see me shimmy in my, in my robe, but I'm shimmying. All right, we're gonna take a few more callers, guys, if you're just joining us, this is our town hall of pop culture. We have a few topics on the docket, including Candy saying that she doesn't believe that the, that Bravo's racist and that Nene had called her a coon. Also, we have on the docket, Jesse Smollet being out of jail and his brother is now saying the black community hasn't supported Jesse because he's gay. We're also talking about Kanye West, that people are trying to have Kanye removed from Coachella. And we're also discussing Kanye's problematic behavior, beha- behavior. Where'd that come from? Behavior on social media. All right, Amor, I'm going to bring you up. Amor, what's going on?
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I want to say congrats to a hundred thousand subscribers. I'm a new subscriber, so I just find your personality so infectious and you're just, I see you going places. I see you winning awards. Okay, so I wanted to say with Kanye, I feel like he's just bitter because he built Kim up so highly and now Kim has left him. So I feel like he's bitter because of that. Wendy, I have a feeling about Wendy Williams, it was a publicity stunt, because it's just weird that she went away for so long. I understand mental health issues and whatever, but it's just funny how now she's on the brink of losing her show. She just suddenly pops back up and wanting to work again. So I feel that's kind of fishy, but I want her back on air. I don't really, I'm not really interested in Sherri Shepherd. I don't know who she is. Yeah, so that's why I have to say, Kanye is bitter. That's why he's harassing Kim, because he's just bitter, bitter, bitter.
Amor, thank you so much for calling in.
Thank you, bye.
We're international, y'all. We have people watching all around the world. I love it. I love it. I love the internet for that. All right. Miss Curry Biggers, I'm gonna bring you up. What's going on, Miss Curry?
Hey, Kempire.
How are you?
Okay, I'm doing well. Your dimples are everything. And just wanted to start off, you can start me now.[1638.62] One thing, the GMA interview with Wendy, was this more concerning, that that other person stepping in, talking? That was, that was concerning. And hearing Wendy in the background saying, yes, yes, that, that was scary. With Jesse, listen, I think it's very scary for him to try to do an appeal, cause as I understand it, if he tries to do an appeal and he gets convicted again, he can get even more time. But I'm not an attorney. With Kanye, listen, I'm not gonna be able to deal with Kanye, all about my family. Have I said this before in the chat? Were you thinking about your family in Wyoming? Were you thinking about your family when you moved to the Atlanta Superdome? Were you thinking about your family when you moved to Florida? Okay, so no, don't, we don't, we don't have time for none of that. So we're not gonna waste that time, but love you, Campire. Keep doing it. Congrats on the 100K and on to bigger and better. Have a good one.
You too. You guys, I, I do wanna say thank you to everyone that's been sending, you know, first of all, those that are calling in saying congrats. Also, shout out to all of you that have been in the Texan community, those of you that have been saying in the comments, thank you, thank you, thank you. We do not do this show alone. I could literally be talking to myself right now, talking about hot topics, but now we are building a bigger and better community every single day. And look, if you're new to the community, understand some of the things here. I twerk on a fence. Meaning that I can see both sides of, of almost anything except Jesse. No, but even then, I always try to see, I can't, me twerking on a fence. Um, but we also welcome differing opinions. I might not like your opinion, I might not agree with you, but we are still respectful of each other in the comment section, in the live chat, and when you call in. So those are just some of the basic rules of everything over here at the Campire. Okay? Amy says, Campire, are you wearing a grad gown? I'm late to the live. We. This is very, very, it's making me look larger than I am, but I'm okay with that. Okay? All right, let me sit back down on my, I need to get a large chair for this, this studio. Okay? All right, let's get back to the callers. Let me take a sip from my coldest water bottle. Shameless plug. And let me just say thank you. Hold on. Nelly, thank you so much for the super chat. Nelly says, Jesse, Jesse, it's privilege. He has fame, money, and a family to support him. What has he done for the black community? Boy, you better sit down. He has been an activist in the past. I, I will give him that. He has been an activist in the past, but I hate the fact that he's even using real life struggles for his excuses. I love that you guys are laughing at me. It's okay. I laugh at myself too. Okay. Catherine, I'm gonna bring you up. What's going on, Catherine?
Nothing much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, I'm trying to hit all the points, my minute. So Wendy first. I love Wendy. I've met her several times, have been listener first, watcher. I feel like Kelvin's betrayal drove her mad. She deserves access to her money. I feel like Wendy on a podcast or series would be like chef's kiss. Kim Ye. I feel like if Ye was doing this to any other woman, white, black, ambiguous, we as a people would be outraged. But since the Kardashians and since they're overexposed, I feel like we somehow feel like less bad for her. I feel like Jesse, well, real quick, Eve's Bayou was a masterpiece and so was Lovecraft, even though it got canceled. And Jesse is ruining Journey's legacy. And Candy, girl, bye.
Wow, you did that in under a minute. Love it. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Guys, if you're just joining us, this is our Town Hall of Pop Culture. For those of you who are like, why is Kemp in a grad gown? This is our Town Hall of Pop Culture. If you're part of the replay crew, I wanna know your thoughts. What are your thoughts on some of these hot topics? Also, if you want a more expansive conversation on this, I talk about hot topics, but I also talk about my recent trip to Puerto Rico. In the podcast, Campire Radio on all podcast platforms, head on over to campiradio.com for direct links. Join, the episode is called, What Happens in Puerto Rico Stays in Puerto Rico. Not. So be sure to subscribe to the podcast if you haven't already. All right. Oh wait, let me just say thank you. We got a couple of super chats. Let me just say thank you. Ariana, thank you so much for the super chat. Faith in the, is the substance. Thank you so much for the super chat. Faith says, hi, Kemper, please check your email I sent on March 12th. Okay, all right, all right. Okay. Unforgettable, I'm gonna bring you up. What's going on, unforgettable? I forget, you're muted.
Hey, Campire.
What's going on?
Okay, I love your speaking voice. I think you are phenomenal. I love just listening to your show. All right, let's get down to it. Kanye West is a narcissist. He needs to be canceled in order for him to understand he does not run anything. Kim, she is tired. Therefore, if you are a tired woman, there is nothing you can do as a man to make that woman come back to you. Okay? And I'm sitting here thinking, as manic as he is, picture her having a sex life with him. It would, what he considers to be artistic. That is all I'm gonna say. All right, with Jesse, everybody's saying that he's part of our community. Well, aren't the Austin Dolo brothers part of our community too? Didn't he try to set them up? And I truly believe he would have threw them under the bus, let them go to jail to save his own self. Wendy, I hope you come back stronger than ever, but Kanye, you need to go somewhere. Kim, put some medicine in his cupcake or something. Make him take his meds. Y'all have a blessed day.
You too, unforgettable. She said that with such a sweet voice. Oh my God. Woo. TikTok, I appreciate you all being here. I see you guys. Hello from London. I see you. Puerto Rico's my island. Yes. What's going on, TikTok? Be sure to keep tapping your screens. We already have over a thousand likes. We almost 2,000 likes. Keep tapping your screens. This is our Town Hall of Pop Culture on the Campire Daily YouTube channel. We're also live on the Campire and Campire Daily on Facebook. Happy Friday. I hope you all have a fantastic weekend. Don't forget, we will be live again on Sunday, Sunday at 12:30 PM Eastern, 9:30 AM PST for our Love and Marriage recap. And then later that day, we're going to have a TikTok watch party of Candy and the Gang, and then a recap, recap on the Campire Daily YouTube channel as well. All right, just so you have a heads up on the schedule, okay? Saturday, you'll get pop culture news, okay? All right, Mocha's backstage. What's going on, Mocha?
Hey, Campire, how are you? Congratulations.
Thank you. How are you?
I'm good. All right, let's see here. Jesse, they're just throwing whatever to the wall to see what sticks. All right, goodbye, Jesse. Nene, buy wig. Wendy, stop the cat, get the coins and cut it out. Kanye, cut it out. Your mother's rolling over in her grave. You married that trash box that everybody done run through. You're being an embarrassment. Kanye, I know you're listening. Nephew, DM me, Mocha Mima on all platforms. We gotta get this straightened out. You're embarrassing the kids and the culture, so knock it off. Love you, Campire. Bye.
It's been under a minute. Mocha's been in under a minute. Wow. All right, we're gonna take these last couple of callers. Victor, did we bring you up? Why does that look familiar? I don't know. Let me bring Victor up. Victor?
Hello.
Victor, are you there?
Yes, hi.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect.
First of all, I wanna say congratulations, Campire. I'm a, I'm a new subscriber. I actually started subscribing because I saw the videos you did on Wendy Williams. So, um, that's how I ended up being a subscriber. But actually, what I'm calling about is, I wanna talk about Wendy Williams. I think that interview was, I did, I think it did Wendy more harm than it did good. But I think all of this shows how Kelvin Hunter was really good at managing Wendy's career. Outside of everything that he did to harm her personally, I think professionally speaking, he was a really good manager. And I think by no means would he have allowed Wendy to do that interview. That, I think, I think all of this time has been a reflection of how Kelvin actually did a good job as a manager of handling Wendy's career. And I think ever since that departure, I think her career has been spiraling out of control. And it's, it's just so sad to see. I think it's so sad, especially for those of us that are big Wendy Williams fans. I think it's just sad to see what an impact like one person's departure from your life can have on you. But I really do wish her the best, and I hope that things turn out really good for her. And I, I think nothing good will come to Sherri.
Oh, all right, Victor. Thank you for calling in. Wow, I had to end it like that. Ooh. Ebony says, great observation, Victor. I've seen this. I've seen a lot of people in the comments say something like this, and I'm like, damn. It's sad. It's such a sad situation. Part of me is trying to have hope. If you've been watching my videos on Wendy Williams, I've been trying to have hope that this is all a plot set up by Todd. Sorry. Nicole says Kelvin kept the mess away from us. Queen, I'm gonna bring you up in just a second. I just wanna see some of the chats, uh, so we can just, my mic drop. Because you guys get to weigh in also in the live chat, so don't think I'm ignoring your comments as well. Okay? Dr. Payne, thank you so much for the super chat. She's right. He could not be good in bed. Damn, Dr. Payne. Dr. Payne, he's still at the hospital. Katrina says, I, I mean, his money depended on her. Um, Victor is right about Kelvin. Chocolate Chunk says, nah, her career was already going down. Her team has been feeding her stale tea for years. Well, you know, I've been in that comment section of the Wendy Show for a while now, even before all of this. And I was saying, who is getting this information for you guys over there? You, the very least, y'all need to hire some bloggers to be on the, the Hot Topics team. The Bureau can't be people that are from, from, from daytime TV. You needed people with their ears to the streets. And that's what Wendy used to have when she was on radio. She used to have some real sources in the streets. But with, with Kelvin, he probably got rid of those sources. Says, damn, is that the curse on Sherri at the end? Look, I wish Sherri the best. I wish Sherri the best, but I didn't love the news of Sherri Shepherd talking about, yeah, I'd, I'd have Wendy on my show. Girl, you could have saved that. Heather says, Todd needs to buy a generator. If you don't know, Candy and the Gang, recapping that Sunday night. All right, anyways. Oh, Queen left. Oh, it's okay. So I'm gonna wrap it up, cause perfect timing, because we've already been live for an hour. Final thoughts. Because I am the chairman, as you can see from my name. But look, you can see from my name. Chairman Campire. If you're part of Replay Crew, this is your opportunity to share your thoughts, your thoughts on the Wendy Williams interview that she did this, this week with Good Morning America. Your thoughts on Kanye and the petition to have him removed from Coachella this year, and your thoughts on the Jussie Smollet situation. I've also posted links to some of the topics that we talked about, including the Candy and Nene situation in the description of this video. So just in case you missed those videos, be sure to check them out there. Thank you to everyone that called in. Thank you to everyone that was part of the conversation in the live chat. We appreciate you guys. We have over 1,100 people in the building. How about we get to 800 likes? Can we get to 800 likes? If you haven't liked the video already, as I said to you at the top of this, liking the video not only helps the channel, but also helps other creators that do similar things be put into your algorithm. So support the channel by supporting others and liking the video. Subscribe to the channel if you haven't already. Okay, cause you're getting daily and consistent hot topics in music, entertainment, reality TV, and so much more. Be sure to check out everything, and don't forget to check out the podcast. I'll be dropping tea when y'all don't even realize it. Speaking of tea, March 30th, lovebeescott.com will have the exclusive Real Housewives of Atlanta, um, season 14 trailer. Just in case, I did a video earlier today about that too. Anyways, thank you to our moderators. Thank you to our Team Campire Royal Court members. If you'd like to become a member of the channel, head on over to teamcampire.com. We will be adding new tiers to that, including a movie night, some other stuff. All right? Let's get out of here. Thank you to everyone being here. Thank you to everyone for the super chats. Thank you to everyone that's been sending in cash apps, Venmos. I see them after the lives, but I do wanna say thank you in advance. I appreciate you guys so much. More information on my social media, podcasts, ways that you can support the channel are located in the description of this video. Everyone, have a great Friday, have a great evening, have a great weekend. And if I don't see you till Monday, I'll see you then. All right? I'll see you guys later. Bye. Let me play some music to get it out of here. Do I got any church music? No, not here. Look, it's all right. We'll play this. Wait, don't lose. That's better. We haven't danced in a while. Don't forget to like the video, y'all. Let's get to 800 likes. We're almost there. Let's get to 800 likes. Wait a second. Wait a second. Let's see, let's see. I bet you, what, we had 300 people leave? They should have left, they shouldn't have left. They shouldn't have left. They shouldn't have left. Are you still here? Are you guys still here? We didn't do a giveaway. We are celebrating 100K of giveaways here on the Campire Daily YouTube channel. You thought I wasn't gonna do an Oprah moment? Look. See, we, we got, we got the fake, the fake ones out. I'm joking, I'm joking. Some people had to go, some people had to had dinner plans, and they were, you know. But we have to do, we have to do 100K of giveaways. Right? Look, they thought we were done. Ooh, y'all thought I was done. Y'all thought I was done. We already had over 800 likes. Thank you guys so much. Let's do a giveaway. Let's do a giveaway. All right, let me ask you guys a question. You have the choice. Should we do a hundred dollar gift card to Apple or a hundred dollar Amazon gift card? Let me see what you guys say in the chat. Matter of fact, you know what I'm gonna do? Hold on. You know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna do a, I'm going to do a quick poll. Let me do a quick poll. Let me do a quick poll. Okay, let's do a quick poll. Amazon, Amazon, I see a lot of Amazon, Apple, Apple. Okay, I should probably use the different one. Hold on. Let me just say. Amazon or Apple gift card? Amazon, Apple. Hold on, yeah. Everyone's ready. I see all of this going by. As we're doing another giveaway, another giveaway here in the channel. We've already given away $100 Amazon gift card. We will, we gave away, um, what else did we give away? Oh my goodness. Oh, coldest water bottle, a 32 ounce with a special Campire 100K engraved. All right, for those of you that are still here, for those of you that are still here, I know people are gonna be mad later, mad. Damn it, I missed the 100K giveaway? Yes, you did. Okay. Someone said, Amazon, I need toilet paper. You know what? Carrie, we could just send that to you if you really do need toilet paper, cause I don't want, there is no reason for people to be struggling for toilet paper. Okay, overwhelmingly, you guys are saying Amazon. We still have over 700 people in the chat though. Has everyone voted? Again, you know how we do our giveaways. We don't do it, we do it through a different system, our Nightbot system, and I have no, no ball in this fight. Okay? All right, overwhelmingly though, 90, you know what? I think more people can do more with a hundred dollars on Amazon versus an Apple thing. I get it. I get it. If you're part of the Replay Crew and you have ideas of giveaways that we should do, we are celebrating 100K of giveaways here on the channel, where we give back to you, our subscribers. Okay? All right, let me go back here. All right. All right, let's see. And we will be doing a separate giveaway for our members and mods and things like that, so stay tuned for something like that. But we'll do this. Okay, we already have quite a few people backstage. Let me. Are you guys ready? Are you guys ready? All right, let's roll it. Let's see what Nightbot has to say. Okay, Ayesha. Ayesha's been a member of the channel, subscribes to September. Hey, Ayesha. I'll give Ayesha a moment to be in the chat. Where did Nightbot go? Ayesha, Ayesha, there we go. Ayesha Ewing, there we go. Ayesha Ewing. Ayesha, once you see this, please email us at giveaways with an S at thecampire.com. Only Ayesha, please. Ayesha, let me know your email, that, those types of things in the email, giveaways@thecampire.com. I just wanna make sure Ayesha is in the building and Ayesha has seen that she's won. Yes, hi, Ayesha. She says, I'm here. Congrats, Ayesha. You have won a hundred dollar Amazon gift card. Unless you really want the Apple card, please let us know in your email, giveaways@thecampire.com. Okay, you get to choose. Okay, you get to choose. Congrats, Ayesha. We appreciate you being a member since September of last year. Thank you. We appreciate your, your support. And that's what we're, we're doing. 100K of giveaways, celebrating 100,000 subscribers here on the channel. Y'all didn't, y'all never know when I'm gonna do a giveaway. I almost didn't do one this live, but I was like, wait a second. Thank you all for your support. Any little way that we're able to give back, if it's through entertainment, if it's through giveaways, if it's through just having fun, we love to do it here on the channel. Thank you to our mods. Thank you to our Team Campire Royal Court members. Thank you to everyone that calls in. Thank you to everyone that sends in super chats. We appreciate you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Everyone, get out of here. I'll talk to you guys later. Go enjoy your Friday. If you're in New York, it's a beautiful day here in New York. Wherever you are, if it's not a beautiful day, well, enjoy your Friday regardless. All right? Talk to you guys later. Bye. Thank you, Rena. Don't forget to like the video. Subscribe to the channel.